Good evening, everyone. This is John Shaw, the director of the Paul Simon Public Policy Institute at Southern Illinois in Carbondale. Thank you for joining a special program which we're very excited about and which the institute's student ambassadors are going to interview an interesting and informative member of the Carbondale City Council, Jeff Doherty. Jeff has an interesting background and lots of good stories to tell and interesting insights as to how city government works. So I want to just turn it over to Jeff in just a second and then he's going to give us kind of a brief introduction. And then our two student ambassadors, Tabitha Coke and Selenka Mortensen will step in and do the interview and learn more about Jeff and his career. So Jeff, thanks so much for joining us and tell us a little bit about how you launched your political career in Carbondale.
Thanks, John. It's a pleasure and really an honor to be on the Paul Simon Institute broadcast here because he was such a hero of mine, Paul Simon. And being in Carbondale, I got to interact with Paul on a regular basis and ran into him in the grocery store and those sorts of things. My background in Carbondale goes back to 1971 when I came here as a college freshman. And I'm one of those many who came to SIU and never left Carbondale. I received two degrees from SIU, one in administration of justice, which allowed me to get a kind of a wide liberal arts education. I took courses in a lot of different disciplines and followed that up with getting an MPA, a master's in public administration or public affairs, it was known at that time. That led me to an opportunity to do an internship with the city of Carbondale. And following that internship, which was for about six months, they hired me on as a regular employee in the community development department, working in the housing rehabilitation program. The city at that time was receiving a lot of federal funds from the old community development block grants. And part of those monies went into rehabilitating low and moderate income homes, mainly in northeast Carbondale. Following that, I transferred over to the railroad relocation project. And those who have been around Carbondale for a while will remember the railroad relocation project. It was this federal program that was designed to eliminate rail highway crossing conflicts. And as you know, in Carbondale, we have a railroad right through the middle of town. And the idea was to lower those tracks so that the bridges could, and streets could go directly over them and not be interrupted with the conflicts. We never accomplished that project due mainly to the years Ronald Reagan was president. A lot of those pork barrel projects were being cut and eliminated. But we were able to build the Pleasantville Roadover Pass, what I call the new Amtrak station downtown, which is interesting because on the city council right now, we're working to replace it. So that's how long I've been around. And the second pedestrian overpass at SIU is Mill Street Underpass as well. Following that, I got more in the general government. I started out as the human resources manager for the city. I moved into more general government in terms of being assistant city manager in the late 80s. Bill Dixon, the city manager, left, so I was the interim city manager for a while. Then I was the deputy city manager. And then finally, 1991, they said, let's just make him city manager. And so from actually 92, 1992 to 2008, 16 years, I served as city manager for the city. Following that, I left the city and became the director of Jackson Growth Alliance, which is a county-wide economic development organization and collaborative effort among the two cities of Murfreesboro and Carbondale, the university, Jackson County Government, and the Southern Illinois Airport, as well as the private sector was represented in this effort as well. Finally, in 2017, I decided to retire completely and I ran for city council. And I was fortunate enough to be elected to the city council and for a four-year term. And that four-year term is up this spring. So it was time to decide if I was going to sign up and try for another four years, which I decided to do. And so that election will be in April this year.
I'll turn it over to the ambassadors.
All right. Thank you. It was nice to hear about your life history, Jeff. So Tabitha and I are going to begin with some prepared questions that we have. It was actually really cool to hear about what all you've done after college. But I really wanted to ask, what sparked your interest in local government? And did you always want to get involved with public service?
Well, I was always interested in politics and following government growing up. When I got into college, I intentionally took a degree that allowed me a wide range of subjects. And a lot of those were in political science. I received a minor in political science. And it just had some, I took some courses, state and local government, urban politics. People like David Kenny at that time was teaching state and local government. And I just got, it just connected with me. I was very interested in it. I did well. And that led me to pursue my master's in public administration. It was really my internship with the city of Carbondale that the hook got me into local government because I could see how, working in local government, you affect people's lives on a daily basis. And it's what wide range of services the city provides and you're involved with that. And you can, you can help people along those lines. So that led up to the internship. And then I decided, hey, this is what I want to do. And I was fortunate enough to be able to pursue that here in Carbondale.
Well, that's awesome to hear. And I know that I'm, as a political science and philosophy major myself, I'm definitely reaping the benefits of that internship experience as well and trying to expose myself to all sorts of different career paths. So I can definitely, definitely relate there. I'm really curious to ask you, because you've spent so much time as a community leader during your time as city manager and now on city council, what qualities do you think make for an effective leader? Have your views on the meaning of leadership shifted at all over the course of your time in public service?
Well, I think leadership comes in a lot of different packages. And, you know, we, we've witnessed different types of leadership, you know, on a national basis, just in the last six months. So it does vary. And I think there are different types that are effective. But I think a lot of the leadership is how people view that person, you know. Are they, do they have compassion? Are they, do they have integrity, ethics? Fairness, I think, is a very important part of being a leader, especially of an organization, where you interact with people directly on a regular basis. Being inclusive, listening to people, being effective, getting things done, really is the bottom line. But you have to be able to, you know, have those qualities and have people buy in to you. Because it's, if you're in an organization, it's your employees who are getting the things done. And they're going to have to make sure that they believe in you. So you just, there's a lot of different aspects to it, I think. The personality involved plays a lot. And you might be a nice guy, but, you know, they just, you don't have some of these other leadership qualities. So you're not going to be effective. I think one of the things I've learned about a leader over time is be effective. You have to treat people well. If you don't treat people well, if you treat them badly, then there's not going to be that confidence in you. They're not going to follow you. They're not going to do their job for you. And it just doesn't make for good results. On the other hand, if you treat people well, you're honest with them, you treat them fairly, they're going to do things for you. They're going to work for you and get things done. What I found effective for me personally over time is that you don't put yourself above others. That, you know, I was one who, I started as an intern and I worked my way up through the organization. So I did different jobs at different levels in the organization. And I learned to appreciate people who do those jobs at those levels. And I didn't forget that when I became the manager, you know, got to the top. Everyone plays an important role in the organization and they all help make things go. And it doesn't take a lot for somebody to get upset and put a clog in it all. So I think treating people well, don't put yourself above others is very important.
Yeah, I've learned a lot about, kind of, or have been researching more into different leadership styles. And one that I think for sure is as effective is kind of what you're talking about is that humble leadership, for sure. But.
Yes. And SIU really does emphasize leadership skills and qualities in all of our classes and stuff. But some of the questions that we have prepared is like, how can non-political science majors advocate for their interests at local level government? And how can they become more involved? Such as myself, I'm actually a zoology major. I'm not even involved with politics here on campus yet. But what are some good opportunities for me or other young people to get engaged with the politics? Because, you know, I've been here for quite a while.
Well, I think the first thing, if you are interested in the politics or local government, public administration, the internship's the best thing to do. And it provides a lot of opportunities, I can attest to. The, and sometimes those are, if you're lucky, they're paid. But, you know, volunteering, you know, a certain amount of time in an organization is good. The experience is what's important. Aside from, you know, you want to be involved and contribute. But, you know, from a selfish point of view for, for the person, you know, for, it's nice on the resume that, you know, I did this internship, I did this, I was involved all the time I was going to school, on top of going to school. So I think that's always good, you know, in, but specifically for someone like you, there's a lot of boards and commissions the city has. And for years, it's always been difficult to get student representation on those boards and commissions. And so, you know, volunteering to serve on those commissions, if you have a particular interest, the environment. There is the sustainability commission that addresses issues like that. There's the human relations commission. So there's different opportunities there. If you do have a special interest, you know, volunteer and to serve on one of these boards or commissions and represent, and represent students, which I think would be very helpful for the community, having a student voice on some of these issues through those boards and commissions. You know, just attend city council meetings or, you know, so that you can go and express yourself on a certain issue. If there's, if the council is considering some issue that, you know, you feel something about, that you have an interest in, that you feel you have, you want to say something about, come and address the city council and give your input along those lines. And then the ultimate is run for city council, you know, be a candidate, get elected to the city council and have an input in terms of how things go.
Now, do you know if the city council has like, where they tell you what their next meeting is going to be about? Or do they have a website for that?
Well, the city has a website, yes. And the agenda is made available through that website. And it's printed, it has to be out 48 hours before we meet under the Open Meetings Act. And it's usually available on Fridays for our following Tuesday meetings.
Awesome. Well, one thing that I kind of wanted to touch on that I've noticed as far as kind of the student population and, and the general population is that a lot of people right now seem to feel very disillusioned with and disconnected to government at all levels. Oftentimes, they cite their frustration with increasing polarization that we see in our political discourse. So what strategies do you use to kind of combat that polarization and foster collaboration? And do you find local politics to be as sharply divided?
Well, I can understand disillusionment, you know, that people have, not only young people, but people of all ages. The polarization that we're seeing, you know, on the political end of things, in particular at state and local governments, I'm not state and local, but state and federal governments. You know, it's frustrating to me. I consider myself moderate independent. And sometimes I feel like I'm being abandoned because I'm a person who believes that government runs best when there's compromise, when there's working together, when there's honesty involved and trust and people doing things for the greater good, rather than political self-interest. And I think that's what we're seeing with polarization. And it's frustrating, it's frustrating me. So but on the other hand, you know, we can't give up. You know, if we give up, if we don't do our civic duty in terms of voting and being involved and expressing our opinions, then democracy fails and then we're... So, so I think, you know, it's really during these times that we, we need to be more involved and more vigilant about what's going on, especially at those, those higher levels because we can't afford for this great experiment of democracy to fail. And so at the local level, we don't have that polarization in Carbondale. We're, we're elected nonpartisan basis. So political parties don't come into being. We have representation across the political spectrum on the council, but not so much of, you know, polarization. But the important thing is that it doesn't come into play in terms of what the work that we do, in terms of our deliberations. The, you know, we may not necessarily agree exactly on some of all these issues for various reasons and for various political thought, but it doesn't come into play. And it doesn't create problems among the council members or the mayor. It's, so we're, I think we benefit from that because it does not hinder us getting things done. We, you know, at the local level, you run because you want to make a difference in your community. You care about your community and you want to do things that better your community. And so you make decisions for the greater good. And I think at least the people on the city council in Carbondale at this point, you know, share that belief along with me.
So what do you do when you run into the situation where you maybe don't agree with someone on an issue? Or, you know, you're talking to a constituent that, yeah, that you do disagree with? Are there kind of strategies that you employ as far as, you know, trying to empathize with them? Or how do you kind of find ways to relate to people that, you know, maybe take a different stance on an issue than you do? Or, or think differently about, yeah, a policy issue or something of that regard?
Well, you make your argument, you express yourself and why you feel a certain way. And, you know, if others feel the other way, you respect their views. It's as long as things don't get personal. They don't, you know, with, with the current city council in Carbondale, we don't get personal. We make our arguments, either agree or disagree, and, and respect the others' views. And, you know, this, this past council meeting, there was an issue where I think the vote was six to one to do something. And I was the one who didn't, who voted no. And I knew that. I knew I was going to be in the minority on that. And my, you know, I made my argument of why we shouldn't do it. But I also made an argument, but if we do do it, and we probably will, since I'm the only one against it, you know, I urge you to take this into consideration when, when it's done, to implement it in this fashion. And the council agreed with me on those conditions. And so, you know, I expressed my views. They respected those and went along with some of them.
I'm glad to hear that they respected your views, even though you were in the minority. Going off that topic, so what is one challenge that you have faced during your time in public service? And how did you really overcome it, even though it may have been really difficult?
Well, it's an interesting question. I think, you know, the challenges, be it, especially when you're city manager, you know, there's various aspects, it's diverse operation, this local government is. Many issues, many different disciplines involved. And so you come up with challenges all the time. And not only are you trying to run an organization, as the lead administrator, you're trying to satisfy seven political people in the city council. So you have a lot of different balls in the air and everything. And that's always a challenge, I think, to do that and to keep things moving in a positive direction. But, you know, the one word you said is one. And I was thinking about that, looking over this, these questions ahead of time. And, and the one was, if there was one challenge, and what, what came to me was when I was appointed city manager in 1992, I had moved my, I had worked myself up through the ranks. I started as an intern. And the person I worked for as an intern was still with the city and it was a department head. And all of a sudden, I became his boss. And there, there are a couple of other people who were in that organization that I had worked for, reported to, been supervised by, now I'm their boss. And, and so I, there was a challenge for me personally to prove to them that I could do the job and gain their confidence and be an effective leader. And fortunately for me, that worked out. That they did, you know, support me in the end. But it was, it was kind of a weird situation. You know, all of a sudden, being, supervising people who used to supervise you.
No, I can imagine that would be definitely an interesting situation to be in, for sure. Do you feel like kind of being in that challenging situation helped, you know, your confidence later on? Or your ability to handle those types of situations for later? Because I know for me right now, it can definitely be a little daunting when I face something like that or when I get really stressed or, because I don't have that, necessarily a lot of that experience to back me up. But do you feel like, you know, over the course of your time in city government, that you've been able to kind of build that confidence and gain that self-assurance? And especially in, in dealing with, you know, the criticism that a lot of times you face while in public service? Do you feel like you found ways to kind of cope with that and, and maintain your confidence? And, yeah.
Well, you know, there's a couple of aspects to it. And I think in terms of internally, what I learned was they did have a lot of confidence in me and they supported me. And, and they wanted me to succeed. And therefore, they worked towards that as well. Externally, you know, you, you're a public official at the local level and everybody always has a grasp. And sometimes you just have to keep your eye down the light at the end of the tunnel and keep moving in that direction. Other times, you need to have what I used to call sloping shoulders, you know, just kind of let things run off a little bit and not hang on to them. Because if you hang on to them, that creates a stress and kind of, it's not a positive way to go about things. You kind of stay focused and move forward and understand where people are coming from. For, they're coming from different ways, different places for different reasons. But I always liked the sloping shoulders.
Well, I will definitely take that advice with me for sure. Because I think sometimes you just can't, you want to listen to criticism, of course, but sometimes you can't take things personally, especially, especially when you're a public figure and, and you're dealing with a lot of that.
That's very true.
And I actually have a question for you that was submitted by one of our audience members before we started. That kind of deals with the university in particular. So I wanted to ask you, how often does city government engage with Southern Illinois University? And how do you find ways to collaborate with university officials and ensure that the SIU community is included in city planning?
Well, the, I think the relationship between SIU and the city of Carbondale over the years has been very good. Very somewhat, depending upon the characters involved, you know, who's the chancellor and the president? Who's the mayor and the city manager? And, you know, but, but overall, it's been very good. You know, a lot of people are not aware that, it's been over 40 years now, that the university leaders and the city leaders have breakfast monthly, along with the leaders of the Chamber of Commerce. And this has been, you know, my experience with it while I was city manager was very good because you sit down, it's informal, but you talk about different issues. You kind of work some things out that, you know, are common interest. And, but it was an environment of dialogue on a regular basis. And I think that's important. And I know the mayor has, you know, regular contact with the chancellor. And that's very positive. Sometimes that hasn't been the case, but, you know, right now, it's a very positive situation. And then you have internally, some of the, within the organizations, there's interactions. The police departments, you know, they, they have to work together and they do. And have, over the years, very effectively, the city provides fire service to the university through contract. So, you know, if there's a fire out on campus, the Carbondale Fire Department responds. So there's a lot of interaction among those lines. Then you get into special projects and so on that benefit both parties, that there's different things working on. And I know the chancellor right now is involved in some different, you know, community and regional efforts and economic development and other things that, you know, is very good, that the university understanding its role, not in Carbondale, but the region in terms of assisting with that. So there's, there's been a lot of that on a very professional basis. And you know, I think also in terms of how the city interacts with the university and with students in particular, I always considered that, you know, a city manager, being a city manager in a college community, that you're part of the learning process for the students. And by that, I mean, you make yourself available. And it used to be the Daily Egyptian printed every day. And it used to be the daily Egyptian printed every day and, and they had a B writer sign city, city government. And who stopped by every day and, and then who also changed every semester. And so it was a new learning experience and, and teaching experience for me and setting down with that. And, and I think that was probably the most interactive part that I ever had with, with SIU students. Other than being a lecturer, talking to classes and so on, those lines. But I always took it as part of the responsibility as city officials and college towns who, you know, be part of the process.
Well, we absolutely appreciate that. And I know, I'm glad that I ended up, my family is actually a full of SIU alum. Both of my parents are SIU alum and my two younger siblings go here and you know, one of the benefits, I think, of being, being at SIU for sure is that kind of close knit community and the ability to really, you know, have, have a lot of those opportunities right at your fingertips to really connect with, connect with the city officials and really connect with professors and so, yeah, I found that, found that as well, for sure.
And, and I'll say from an historical basis, I think it's improved the, the student community relations have improved. And it really started improving when the SIU enrollment started going down. And then all of a sudden, it was the business community and then the community as a whole, well, wait a minute, you know, this is just not automatic. Twenty thousand kids come to Carbondale every year, you know, just like that, we, we have to start working at this. We have to be better hosts and, and so on. And, and so I've seen that mature over time in a positive way in terms of how the community host students here.
Oh, yes. So I did catch in that last paragraph that you were talking about some economic development. One of the questions from the audience was actually as part of this area's development, is there any immediate plan to fill the old Macy's location or any of those empty buildings over in the mall and some more of the buildings that are closing down due to COVID reasons?
Well, in terms of the mall in particular, I'm not aware of any. The, the mall is owned by a private entity, a, a national real estate company that owns several different mall properties. And they have an ongoing real estate division that, you know, looks to lease spaces. Who they are talking to, I'm not aware of. And I, I don't know if the city manager maybe that would be more of his day-to-day activity and being, being aware of that. I'm confident that we will eventually have those spaces filled. And I, I think I look at, you know, the retail thing on a national basis, it, it's kind of a mess right now. I mean, JCPenney's is in bankruptcy and so, you know, in a year or so, we may not have any JCPenney's. Macy's is the same way. Their profits went down fifty-five percent, they just reported. So they're not in good standing and COVID sure hadn't helped anything. So it's very difficult these days for the brick and mortar stores to compete with the internet. And like I said, COVID has not helped that because, you know, I don't go in the stores anymore. I have it delivered or pick it up or order online. I'm just like everyone else. And so it's, it's very hard. I'm, I'm concerned about the future of retail along those lines. But I'm also confident that people still want to go in the short, the stores and shop and so on. I, I go back to the strip mall, the strip mall, the, the mall across from the university place, the across from the university mall, where, where you have Best Buy and which is closing the Dick's and parties, you know, that, that, that used to be the Kmart. And when Kmart closed, everyone's going, oh my gosh, that's, that's really too bad. But really, Kmart was not a good performing retailer for us here in this community. It was a weak performer. And, and my view was this is an opportunity to bring in somebody stronger. And well behold, you know, here came Dick's and Best Buy, you know, and Party Central and, and PG Maxx. So they're stronger retailers. And the same can happen, you know, with the mall space as well because Macy's and JCPenney's were just not strong performers. And hopefully we can get something in there that can be a little more stronger. But a lot of that, a lot of that, you know, we, we, we have to work with the property owner along those lines.
Well, I definitely think, oh, I'm sorry, Solinka.
Okay, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I definitely think that there are for sure multiple ways to look at it. And I know, know that I would not want to be buying all of my clothing and, and those sorts of things online anytime soon. But I was just gonna ask before we move into our last couple of questions. You mentioned that you are running for another term for city council this spring. I just wanted to ask you kind of what you've done to prepare for that run for office. And you kind of mentioned some of the challenges that have come with the COVID nineteen pandemic and, and, you know, that we, we've definitely all seen with elections. So I just wondered if you could touch a little bit on that before we get into our last, last couple of questions here.
Well, I, yes, I am running for reelection. And the reason why I'm running is because I care about the Carbondale community. It's my home. And it is now home to few of my grandchildren. And so I want the community to prosper and be successful. Because I fully anticipate they will grow up here and go through the school systems and, and hopefully decide to stick around. But you want to make your community better for not only your family, but everyone in the community. And I feel I have something that to offer along those lines in terms of my background, having an, an understanding of the community, having an understanding of the city government organization. And, and just having some general ideas of what I like, I could do. So in the next four years, I think hopefully, well, let's look back, you know, the, the last four years, I think we, the city councils worked well together. And we have a good group. And, you know, I've enjoyed being a part of that. The past year's been difficult because we've not met in person now for a year. And because of COVID. And so, you know, this is nice talking to everyone here and everything, but you don't get that interpersonal communication. And you don't have the involvement of the public as much. It's very difficult for the public to participate through Zoom. And we don't use Zoom, we use another thing. But it's very difficult for the public to participate. And, and I think that's, if there's one thing through this whole process of COVID and meeting virtually and everything, that's one public participation has really suffered. And so I'm looking forward to meeting in person soon. I just got my second shot today. So I, I'm really excited about being able to meet in person and get that public participation. But we have some challenges involved because of the COVID, from an, a financial point of view from the local government. It's, we, we're no different from any other local government or state government that, you know, financially have been hit from COVID for various reasons. And this is going to take some management on the part of the, our city manager and staff and council to effectively respond to this challenge and continue to provide those basic services that our community expects and, and require, really deserves. So I, I think that's something that we'll be working on. We've looked at some different scenarios already. And we know that this is going to be an ongoing basis in terms of reviewing where we are and so on. And that's one thing that we will be challenged with. One of the things I'd like to, in terms of economic development, I, I'd like to see a little more more investment on our part. We have a very good person handling economic development with the city, but he needs help. And I think we need to invest in some of the other economic development organizations and become a, a player and a partner more on a regional basis for economic development efforts to create jobs. The, the Southern Illinois Airport has been basically an economic growth center. We, we see a lot of construction going on out there that's going to be creating jobs for companies that are already committed to coming in. And, you know, we, we need to make sure we're, we're, we're playing or a partner in, in, in those efforts. The, the city council recently initiated an effort to create some residential TIF districts or tax increment financing districts. On, in the residential areas and the older parts of central Carbondale, in each segment, the northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest areas to rehabilitate these older areas and in terms of the housing stock. And create some first-time homebuyer opportunities to get some of these homes back into homeownership and give that incentives through TIF districts. And I think this is something I'm very excited about because kind of going back to my, my days in housing rehabilitation, I, I think, you know, you, you, if you can preserve your old, older housing stock, that's good because it, it maintains character in the neighborhoods. And it creates very pleasant places for people to live and encourages the people to live in those, those areas. So that's something that, that I'm very excited about coming about in the next four years.
Well, we'll go ahead and ask you, since you kind of touched on kind of your vision for the next four years and what you would like to accomplish the most. We have one kind of final, more relaxed question for you, and that is, what is your favorite spot in Carbondale?
Well, aside from my home. I think over time, Campus Lake. You know, Campus Lake is a place where it's right in the middle of campus, you know, I can beat that. But it's accessible to everyone, the community. And, you know, it's two mile walk through nature around the lake and, and various times. And, or a run. But no, I, I just always throughout my time in Carbondale, there've been times I spend a lot of time there on a regular basis. And then sometimes I, you know, get away from it and then I always go back. But I think Campus Lake is, is the one draw for me in the Carbondale community that always has a special place for me.
Yeah, Solinka, I don't know about you, but I definitely feel spoiled being on such a beautiful campus, especially like now that we're getting into springtime. I run and I'm so like looking forward to running on campus and seeing all the trees bloom. And then in the fall when you have, you know, Thompson Woods and yeah, I get to walk around the lake and see all the little critters and animals out there and the turtles in the sun. And yeah, it's definitely, definitely feels similarly as well, but.
Yes, I am sad to see the snow go. It was really, it did make campus look really, really pretty, but I'm excited for spring and graduation coming up soon for all those students and stuff, so.
Well, awesome. We wanted to thank you, Jeff, for taking the time to talk to us. I really appreciate you hopping on and, and having this conversation, even if it has to be done virtually. And glad to hear you got your vaccination. So hopefully we are on the, on the way to normalcy here.
And so far, no reaction. So that's really good.
I've heard it, it definitely leaves a little bit of a nasty feeling in your arm on that second one, that it can, it can hurt a little bit, but I'm glad to hear that.
You're so good. Playing golf tomorrow, so, so hope it's not sore.
Yeah, hopefully I'll be, be ready to go. But glad to hear that you've gotten that. And we wanted to thank the institute staff for all of their help with preparing and facilitating the event. And also wanted to give a big thank you to our audience. Of course, the institute greatly appreciates your support and attendance of these webinars. A recording of this conversation will be uploaded to the institute's YouTube channel. So anyone who didn't get the chance to watch it live can, can watch it afterwards on the YouTube channel. So thank you again, Jeff, and hope everyone has a good night.
Thank you.
It was nice to meet you, Jeff.